Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Pittsburgh Public Schools' Public Hearing. Today is Tuesday, May 27th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we begin, I just want to remind everyone of the process for tonight. Each speaker, whether they're in person or online, will have three minutes to speak. Only one speaker for each registration. You can't share your time with others, so please avoid doing that. We're going to call each speaker one at a time. As your time begins to wind down, if you're in person, the red light on the microphone will start to blink. If you are virtual, we will use the hand raise symbol on Zoom to let you know that your testimony is almost complete. And as we are doing hybrid testimonies again, we are giving first speaking to those in person, and so we'll call all of the folks that are here in person to speak first, followed by those online. We would ask if you're testifying virtually, show up a little early so that you don't, because sometimes folks don't show up and your time comes up sooner than you expect, and we don't want to miss you if you get called and you're not there. But we will give you a couple of chances to answer if you're on Zoom. So just be ready. Let's see, what else, what else, what else? As always, if you're not able to attend in person, or testify in person, or it be a Zoom, your written testimony, if it was presented to the Board Secretary this morning, will be included in the public document that is shared on our website along with the video for tonight's meeting. Our stakeholders can view the public hearing by clicking the link at the top of our district's homepage, and tonight, Ms. Mercedes Williams will be moderating, and I will turn the microphone over to her.
Thank you, President Walker. At this time, our first speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Good evening. My name is Emily Sawyer. I'm a parent of four PPS students and one graduate of Pittsburgh Perry. I'm incredibly worried about the lack of equity directives in the current draft of Policy 802.1 regarding private sponsorships. We will not sidestep, sachez, trip, or accidentally back our way into equitable and just schools. Something like sponsorships, which are often predicated on social capital, family and community contacts, and the availability of resources within family, community, and social networks, is rife for inequity if we do not design equity guardrails in. It has been made clear to me that at least some of the board members feel that including equity guardrail requirements in the policy is micromanaging, and that this needs to be left up to the superintendent and administration. I find this a woefully lacking strategy. When will the AR be written? The policy itself allows for the fact that no AR may exist. What will become of any chance at equity then? What is the recourse of the board or community if the AR is written and we don't find it sufficient? Why allow an insufficient AR to ever be written when equity guardrails could be required by the policy? This is not an unreasonable ask. At the very least, the board should direct, in policy, the superintendent and administration to track and publicly report all sponsorships by campus, or for district sponsorships to be broken down by the amount dispersed to which campuses. This is a must. We will never be able to assess whether we have equitable distribution of resources if we are not tracking and reporting resources and their distribution. Secondarily, the board should direct, in policy, the superintendent and administration to include in the AR processes and guidelines for reviewing, accepting, or requesting amendments to sponsorships in the event that certain schools or groups are accruing, or could potentially accrue disproportionate amounts of sponsorship resources. Thirdly, the board should direct, in policy, the superintendent and administration to include in the AR processes and guidelines for distribution by the superintendent of any district-wide sponsorship resources, so that equity is attained and needs are met before privilege is catered to with these resources. We won't reach equity unless we build it purposefully through equitable policy processes and practices. I'm grateful for the increased detail and appreciative of some of the ideas in the FU Plan update, but I have concerns about libraries and librarians, about triple blocking ELA, which is absolutely absurd, about language only being included in the middle school schedule for eighth grade, about the quarter schedule for specials at middle school, where is play included in the middle school schedule? How will we create homeschool environments that are conducive to learning for students who previously would have been sent to SAC, because it's not just about keeping them at their home campus? How will we improve graduation progress tracking? How will the neighborhood magnet model be implemented to ensure access and equity and guard against gentrification? How will the magnet process be improved overall to increase equity and access? And how will we improve culture and working communities?
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarah.
Good evening. I have two kids and live in North Point Breeze. This plan proposes to change my neighborhood's current attendance zone. My kids and all the other neighborhood kids would experience disruption in the continuity of their education and sense of community. There is a lack of information around high schools in this plan. My son attends Alder Dice. He has been with the same group of children since kindergarten. With this proposed new attendance zones, he would go to Westinghouse School. Would he have access to AP classes at Westinghouse? Would he have to give up the engineering magnet? There is nothing in this plan that talks about any of this, so I have nothing to go on as a concerned parent. Westinghouse shows a 3% rate of completion for college. What I would like to know is how you plan on making Westinghouse Academy equally successful compared to all the other high schools for the kids who already attend and those you are proposing will attend. Until there is more information in the plan about high schools, this plan is incomplete. The plan talks about how it is harmful to have a loss of connection to one school community. These written words sound good on paper, but they do not reflect reality for my family or the families in my neighborhood. Currently, our kids go to elementary school with one group of kids and would be rezoned to go to a middle school with a completely different group of kids in a much more crowded middle school that has a projected deficiency of five classrooms. So why move my neighborhood out of its current attendance zone, causing a disruption to this kid's school's community? It does not make sense. Lastly, I question the logic behind using historic attendance zone patterns as a blueprint for redistricting. Last month's copy of print newspaper said the lines were being referenced from 30 years ago. That was the 90s. Pittsburgh was especially, in eastern communities, were completely different, and everywhere in the city was experiencing a population exodus. This leaves me questioning, why are we using historical zoning patterns from a time that the city was vastly different, and the quality of living in Pittsburgh was lower than it is now? The old maps feel like the wrong and outdated tool to be guiding this process. This concludes my thoughts.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Shirley Anne Hill.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher, Ms. Stephanie Lepine, by Principal Callie Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subject to toxic principles like her. In December 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lepine was removed from her classroom by Callie Meyer. After many attempts by parents/guardians, Callie Meyer did not offer an explanation for Ms. Stephanie Lepine's removal. Ms. Stephanie Lepine was cleared in February of 2024, but was conveniently transferred to another school that does not have a Montessori program. Why was Ms. Stephanie Lepine not reinstated at Montessori where she belongs? Get it right for the upcoming school year, please. Why is Callie Meyer not being held accountable for her unfair treatment of Ms. Stephanie Lepine, the only lead Black teacher? Some Montessori teachers have filed grievances, and still nothing has been done. Toxic principles like Callie Meyer put fear in teachers who speak up by sabotaging their teacher evaluations. Pretending there are no problems at Montessori definitely creates an unsettling work environment. Teachers should not have to adapt to this leadership style to keep their jobs. Some principals are good for conveniently cutting positions when you speak up. I question how students are first when toxic principles are not held accountable. Carrick High School has a very, very small percentage of Black teachers. I quote, "Having a Black teacher builds cultural bonds between educators and students and has a positive impact on students' academic outcomes." Research has shown that Black teachers have a direct positive impact on Black and non-Black students. This is from Intercultural Development Research Association, February 26, 2025, "Black Students at Carrick Matter." Computer application should be a mandatory business elected class for all incoming freshmen. During my time at Carrick, some English teachers, CTE, ITL, and the CTE director have indicated the importance of this class. Freshmen are not getting the necessary skills in middle school. When it is time to do a project, some of them are lost. While at Carrick, I have helped students many times navigate through the necessary software to complete their projects. Quite often, teachers require students to do projects that utilize Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel. These skills are beneficial to students beyond high school. I hope with the incoming new principal, there will be changes at Carrick. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is John Grimm.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is John Grimm. I'm a custodian currently at Alder Dice High School. I am also a parent of two students that graduated from Pittsburgh Public, and my concern here is, well, like every member of this board, we care about the students and the well-being of the students, and we want them to have the best experience possible. We all play an important part in making this happen. Now, my part here is maintaining a building such as Alder Dice. I have the bling match. And we show up early, we leave late, and we ensure that the buildings are safe for our children, and in every manner. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that every day. We all are. I was just hoping that, along with my fellow workers, that we were trying to negotiate a contract, simply a contract that allows us to make a decent living and enables us to keep showing the best of ourselves while doing this job. The last offer that was submitted to us was kind of like a slap in the face for how we were negotiating, and it was just a take it and leave it. We are confident. We are asking if your presence could be in these negotiations to shift the conversation in a positive manner, on our behalf as well as the board's behalf, and I'm inviting you to join us at our next negotiations. Our petitions, that our campaign that we ran, and our responses from social media have shown that we have the community's support. We are now just asking for yours, and I'd like to say thank you before anything happens and for your time and attention on the topic. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Katie Rank Lev.
Hello. I'm here today to ask questions as you face big decisions on next steps with the facilities utilization plan. My biggest question is why we can't do the things on the proposed desired schedules with our current school configurations. But barring that, I have questions about STARIT, which is where my children attend now, and where they will go in the proposed redesign. The plan includes a case study for STARIT and lists enrollment there currently at 179, although there is a waitlist for the magnet program. The plan, which doesn't reference STARIT's magnet program, so I have no idea if it's ending, proposes to increase enrollment to 379 students. I was looking at the building analysis from March, and I'm confused how the new enrollment doesn't exceed capacity for STARIT to offer all of the things laid out in a sample schedule. The building analysis document from March indicates that STARIT is five rooms short. The updated plan lists the building as three rooms short, but says some things can double up, and lists homeroom as an example. My STARIT children have always had homeroom in the physical space of another subject, and I'm not aware of any empty space in the building. I don't understand where a proposed makerspace or tech lab will go. If all the schools still won't have specialized spaces, I'm not sure I understand how a shuffle of this magnitude increases equity. Speaking of a shuffle, I can't help but notice the plan has my children and my neighbors' children attending Minadeo for elementary, and then leaving that school-community-friend group from over six years to matriculate to a different middle school from their peers. STARIT will also presumably take in the students from Wilkinsburg, starting in seventh grade. I wish there was information in the plan about that, and what it might look like to build community with those new students. STARIT seventh graders will experience three peer shuffles in three years, forever. The plan references a house system. I tried to look at the Ron Clark website to learn about that, but it seemed like a video game, and the animation was too much for my Wi-Fi, so I still don't understand that. But there's nothing in the report about standard offerings for high school. My oldest child is proposed to be moving to a different school for his senior year. His proposed high school has a capture rate of 23%, and a 3% rate of completion for college. The proposal looks to move high school students away from a school with advanced math and science offerings, so I am curious what the plan would be to improve the opportunities at all of the high schools. Why doesn't the plan have more information about high school? I know this has been in works for 18 months, but it feels incomplete to me. I don't understand the rush, and I don't understand the metrics for measuring success.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Doug Johnson.
Good evening, board members. My name is Doug Johnson. I'm a custodian at Pittsburgh Siatech. We as custodians do more than just cleaning up messes. We maintain safer environments by preventing hazards, responding to incidents as they arise. We support learning by setting up classrooms, supporting educational assemblies. We build relationships with students and teachers, and we contribute to all over cultures of our schools. We are vigilant, presence that is always watching over everyone inside our schools. We ensure is efficiency, waste management, energy used in our building. We support staff, students, and every term. Custodians and every staff members are the backbone of a well-functioning school district. I'm joining my fellow workers at Pittsburgh Public Schools, the members of ASME Local 297, and requesting the members of this board to join our next meeting. The district chiefs, their attorneys, presence, and presidents offer the unanimous reject of membership. We just eager, as everyone else, to get this contract in place and move on, but simply could not accept the last best and final offer that was presented to us. We need to get back to the table, and we need you in the room to guide us with the conversation. We give so much to this district, and we know we can't be better than what was offered. This school year is concluding, and another one will be here before you know it. Let's get back to the table, get a deal done. Your presence in the room will help make this happen. So we hope to see you there. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Brian Burkata.
Good evening, members of the Board of Directors, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brian Burkata. I'm a custodian at Pittsburgh Kappa. As president of our union, ASME Local 297, I am proudly representing 400 employees of this district. We are the workers who keep our schools safe and clean. We are the cooks, custodians, cleaners, groundskeepers, mechanics, maintainers, laborers, HVAC system operators, equipment operators, pest controllers, and musical instrument repairers who make this district happen. We are also active members of our union and our communities. We pay property taxes and send our children to schools in this district. I personally have grandchildren in this district. We have worked hard this school year, and every school year, to serve the students of this district and to ensure they have the best educational experience possible. We have done so without a contract since the beginning of this calendar year, and after negotiating with an attorney hired by the school district, a last, best, and final offer was presented for us, the workers of the district to vote on. As you know, we unanimously rejected that offer. We negotiated in good faith, and we got presented with an offer that disrespects the hard work we do for the students of this district and disregards the ever-rising cost of living in this economy. It is clear that a higher level of dialogue is required to reach a deal. Our local union has been gathering petition signatures requesting that members of this board attend future contract negotiation sessions. To date, and we only started Saturday, we have 331 signatures. We are here tonight with the community behind us to formally extend our invitation to members of this board to please get involved in this situation by attending our negotiations. Our next negotiation session will take place on June 17, 3:30, here in this building, upstairs in the board committee room. Please consider attending. Your presence, as well as your insight and expertise, would be a powerful force to help us reach an agreement that the workers of this district can support. At a time when public education is under attack from the federal level, we need your support here at the local level more than ever. I am here to answer any questions you may have, and I look forward to working with you all to resolve this matter, so we can all put 100% of our focus on the most important thing to all of us, and that is students first, always and always. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Vincent Santucci. A second call for Vincent Santucci. Our next speaker is Michael Cummings.
Good evening. Mike Cummings, PPS parent and the coordinator of the PPS Community Proposal. And I thank you for providing more information from the administration, and some of the positive changes like preserving Conroy's location, reducing the closures on the North Side. These are important steps, ones that should have been addressed in the initial feasibility report, but I'm really glad to see them now. This new plan has some really good elements, but also some serious concerns. Frankly, what we're doing right now is where we should have started over a year ago with this concept of how to rethink our district, long before thinking about facilities utilization. This is what the district's five-year plan called for. Doing this out of order hasn't created a longer runway or a smoother landing. It's created turbulence, distrust, and planes falling out of the sky before they even try to land. I want to congratulate, in this recent election, both new and returning board members. The strong wins for most of them reflect the public's desire for real equitable change from the candidates that won, but Mr. Walker's narrow race shows the concern of this process is not limited to just a vocal few. Most of us support significant change for equity's sake, but not at the expense of transparency, transparency, and community trust. The new board members coming in are clearly committed to this work, so let's make sure we get it right. A strong plan with broad community backing is the only way forward. Rushing ahead without that is a mistake that will cost our kids. Here's one thing we could do to demonstrate both fiscal responsibility and excellent leadership. This summer, move this administration into our schools, and lease this building to Pitt, to CMU, or to anybody crazy enough to try to compete with them. That saves us a lot of money, probably millions of dollars, and it gives the district real leadership insight into what happens in our schools day to day. We say student outcomes improve when adult behaviors change. Let's start by asking the adults in this building to sacrifice their comfort first, lead by example, and lead in close proximity to the students that they're governing. Now regarding engagement, it's been said again and again that this process includes deep community engagement. How is it, if that's the case, that the community proposal team was never given the chance to propose their proposal, despite being told that we could by our president? Why did it take six months to get one meeting with the administration, and then we were declined to follow-up meeting? Thousands of volunteer hours and widespread community input went into this proposal. This does not feel like robust community engagement. Our plan addresses many of the challenges facing the district right now. We're ready to work with the district to create the best path forward. So there's a simple ask. If the district wants to claim community engagement, then allow us to publicly present our proposal, complete with board questions and input, community feedback. That's the bare minimum to say that you've done robust community.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is April Clasora.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the board and superintendent for responding to the extent that you have to the need for more information in the facilities plan. I wish we could have started with more of this and not the dramatic recommendations from the ERS consultant. What I envision in coming to the kind of changes that we need to make in the district is something like what the parent-school-community councils could do, like have the individual schools sit down with our district representative and get broader local community input and put all those ideas together. First, meet on the school level and talk about what's working and not working, and then meet in a group of parent-school-community councils in that feeder pattern. We need district-wide data to inform us, but the smaller PPS gets, the more you're left with those of us who are very committed. So letting us be involved in that work is going to get a lot more buy-in and charge us with gathering input from the larger communities of people who can't always show up at hearings and these kinds of meetings. But for where we are now with the revised recommendations, I think it has moved in the right direction in some instances. For example, the revised plan for the North Side region. As a bus driver who has always been with the schools in the north, I think the current recommendation aligns better with what those buildings consist of, as far as their space, and would preserve some of the school communities better while moving them. It would remedy the negatives of the current situation where we take a lot of kids from Northview and north neighborhoods and bus them really far to school, like an hour and 15, an hour and 20 minutes. A lot of times, their own teachers don't realize how long they're on the bus every afternoon. The further you bus kids, the more chance there is for those kids to get into trouble just discipline-wise, so that's disproportionate. Keeping Conroy open is something that I strongly agree with. As a driver, I've felt very strongly the sympathy for those parents and kids and the amount that even small disruptions can make a big impact on them. Any transitions we have in the coming years are still going to be more or less painful and disruptive. So one thing that I would really love us to do is activate the parent-school-community councils to their full potential during this time, and do more than just...
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Ann Ferris.
Hi. I'm Ann Ferris, a PPS parent living in the North Side. The federal administration is gutting our public institutions, essential services, and scientific research in the name of cost savings when it's clear these savings are costing more to all of us and will never be seen by us. Don't vote as a board for a plan that will clearly cost so much more than it saves. Members of this board insist in their other sessions that they are not giving away their power through the adoption of student outcomes-focused governance, so don't give away your power by checking the box on Dr. Walter's feasibility report. Yes, he presented more details and numbers, but there is still a substantial lack of critical information. I do not see at this point how a responsible assessment can be made as to whether the plan is feasible, given numerous outstanding questions. Without demographic data, how do you know the plan will accommodate all of the students in the district? Does it account for busing for students eligible for a school transfer or scholarship under the Opportunity Scholarship Tax Credit Program? Was this taken into account? Was the attrition to charters and privates and the busing required for that taken into account? How is it possible to have a preliminary bus plan without this information? Where are the costs to implement this plan? The previous round of school closures and reconfiguration cost tens of millions of dollars. Where are the projections for staff and faculty to support this updated schedule that you sent out last week? For example, how many world-language teachers will the district employ, and what is the recruiting budget and plan? Why does this plan move currently enrolled magnet students to their home schools in the fall of two thousand twenty-six? How is this less costly and disruptive than a phased implementation plan? PPS has closed and reconfigured the district before, and these are models of repeating failure. Why does this plan close so many of the successful magnets and dilute these programs down to schedules? How is it equitable to reduce the magnet option for elementary down to one? Closing Shenley and opening the Obama Traditional Academy did not result in increased success of the IB program. Have the courage to maintain existing high-performing schools and build more schools on the model of Dilworth, SciTech, Kappa, and Alder Dice, and work harder on solving busing challenges to offer more choice, not less, for all families. And also, will you change this forum? Why is this a battle when we are all working toward better outcomes for our students? Take down this wall of one-way communication and have the courage to have an actual conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Cummings.
I really want to start with a thank you for some of the good changes that are in this proposal, but I have to be honest. It's hard to feel that way after the path that has brought us here. One example is Conroy. Keeping it in its current location is the right thing to do, and I'm glad to see that the decision was made to preserve that. However, over many meetings, we heard countless Conroy parents, teachers, and students explain why the move was not feasible and highly detrimental to the fantastic services that Conroy provides to some of our exceptional kids. In February, the administration presented the Conroy move both as feasible and highly beneficial, despite all of the concerns from the community. It was exceedingly obvious that the community was not on board, that the move was not student-focused or feasible for these children, and certainly, a pool and plants was not enough to make it highly beneficial. It is very obvious that the benefit of the move was purely financial, and the administration was completely disregarding the needs of the students and the voice of the community. So it is hard to be thankful about these decisions where we have to force your hand to prioritize the very obvious best choice of the children involved over the financial implications of that decision. I want to believe the administration when they say that they've enacted robust community engagement, but it is hard to believe that after watching the community proposal team dedicate thousands and thousands of hours to bring innovative ideas to the table, only to be denied the presentation time that they were told they would get, and also to only get one meeting with the administration after asking for one for six months. We all want the same thing. We all want a great PPS that works for all kids of all backgrounds, races, socioeconomic statuses, so on and so forth. We want to consolidate, but only in a way that is thoughtful, that makes sense, is truly sustainable for our district for years to come. We want to be partners with you in that effort, but it is hard to accept this proposal when it's so riddled with evidence of not making decisions based on the real needs of the students that it's supposed to serve or the voices of the community who knew the needs of their, who know the needs of their kids and neighborhoods best. We want to work with you. Please let us help make PPS the best it can be and stop shutting us out.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Trey Cummings.
My name is Trey Cummings, and I'm a first grader at PPS. I already knew that my school was going to close, but my dad told me this morning that you might take away STEAM, and that it made me really sad. I even cried. I love STEAM. It's my favorite part of school. STEAM is really fun, and it helps me learn in cool ways. I get to do stuff with math, science, that makes learning exciting. Sometimes math is kind of boring, but when I do STEAM, it makes it fun. It helps me understand the math I'm learning better. I'm going to, I know not all kids learn the same. Some kids like reading, some like art, and some like other things. That's okay, but we need things like STEAM so everyone has something they love at school. It helps us learn in the way that works best for us. Please don't take away STEAM. It's really important to me and to lots of other kids, too. We should all get the chance to learn in the way that makes us happy and helps us grow. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jaslyn Worthy.
As we face critical decisions about the future of our schools, I want to highlight a practical and timely resource. But before I elaborate, I would like you all to acknowledge that despite what us very loud and few have to say, we understand that difficult decisions lie ahead. Budgets are tight, resources are strained, but before we move forward with the irreversible step of closing our schools, I urge you to ask: Have we truly explored every avenue, especially the new ones, especially the ones that didn't exist five or even two years ago, that has not been fully considered in this process? Amongst them, artificial intelligence. AI is already being used in districts nationwide to optimize transportation, project enrollment trends, manage resources, and even support student learning. These tools can help us better understand where efficiencies can be gained without defaulting to closures as the first solution. These tools can help us better understand where, oh, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. Excuse me. This is not about replacing people. It's about using every resource we have, especially those that allow us to plan based on real-time data, not just projections or assumptions. If we're, say, we're committed to equity and innovation, then we need to put those principles into practice. At the same time, I want to make something very clear. Families in our community have already taken initiative. We have created a thoughtful, community-driven plan for our district. We have put in the work, and we are ready to contribute. If this process is going to be truly equitable and effective, it must include the people that it impacts the most. Parents and family are not just recipients of decisions. We are partners in shaping the solutions. And I believe the thoughtful use of AI, combined with genuine community collaboration, can help us avoid outcomes that disrupt neighborhoods and dismantle progress. Yet, the administration that you are looking to for assurances have not engaged in meaningful dialogue with us. They have not explored every avenue that much change. Families are not an afterthought. We are stakeholders, problem solvers, and partners. We are asking for a seat at the table, not to be informed of decisions after they're made, but to be part of shaping them before they happen. AI can help. Community input can help. Together, these are not obstacles to progress. They are the path to it. We are here, we are organized, and we are ready to be a part of the solution, because that plan on the table, it ain't it.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Erin Breen.
My name is Erin Breen. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Greenfield School and a member of the PTO board there. I love Greenfield K-8, and I have a lot of concerns about the facilities utilization plan as it stands. I have emailed my board member, Tracy Reed, with these concerns several times with no reply. One huge issue with this plan is the transportation aspect. Greenfield and Colfax are both majority Walker schools. Greenfield is over ninety percent Walkers, and this shift to K-8 at Colfax will cause a huge issue with transportation. Many of the current middle school students walk to and from school, but with this shift will require busing. Since middle school students have to use public transit, the PRT cuts are front of mind. I am not sure if the board is aware, but Greenfield is losing almost all PRT bus lines. How will our students get to Colfax? This was not addressed well in the update last week. Another issue I have is with the timeline for these changes. As addressed in my email to Ms. Reed, the changes to almost all of these schools are scheduled to occur over one summer. I know it is broken down by June 2026, summer 2026, and fall 2026, but school ends halfway through June, starts at the end, and starts at the end of August. That is just a little over more than two months to reconfigure the whole district. Why is this necessary? If you must change everything, why do it all at once? How can families possibly trust that the district can handle something at this scale in such a short period of time and do a good job? I was glad that a board member questioned the facilities team's ability to handle these changes over a short period of time, but found Mr. McNamara's answer laughable at best. Facilities has failed to keep up with the basic maintenance at Greenfield, let alone a huge undertaking that this will be. The paint is peeling off the walls in most classrooms, the plaster is falling off the walls in the stairwells, there has been a leak in one of the classrooms for over a year, and the front fence is peeling paint that we were told by Facilities contains lead. I have zero confidence that this will be done well, if at all. Lastly, with the lofty goals of adding more offerings like world language and STEM classes, how will the district plan to address staffing these positions? We know there is a teacher shortage, a sub shortage, and a para shortage as well. The district has not adequately addressed how it will staff additional classes when we do not have all current positions filled, especially if you consider some of our most experienced teachers may opt to retire rather than deal with the district's newest plan. Without good answers to these questions, I urge the board to vote against moving forward with the current facilities utilization plan. Just because Dr. Walters believes it is feasible doesn't mean that it is right. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Breen. Our next speaker is Melinda Mix.
I'm Melinda Mix, an itinerant English language development teacher. I want to thank you for including an expansion of English language development center schools for our English learners in the most recent version of the feasibility plan. This is one important step towards meeting the needs of our students and helping them achieve success in our schools. It's not exactly what we wanted, but it's not nothing, and we can work with that. Of course, the planning of new ELD center schools would, should include current ELD teachers, and we are ready and willing to have conversations with the board or with the members of administration that will be responsible for planning and implementing these programs. We are the best source of information about what works, what doesn't, and what's best for our classrooms and our students. We already have many questions about this expansion and how it might actually achieve the goal of meeting the needs of students. Here are some of them, directed to both the board and district administrators. For starters, what do you think an ELD center is? What characteristics make it different from other schools or programs? And most importantly, how will the new centers be the same or different from our existing centers? Because our existing ELD centers are not just inequitable, they are straight-up unequal. Three minutes is not enough time to explain all the ways we are falling short with our existing centers and services, but I can go through some highlights for you. The following is from a document that my colleagues and I sent to you in August of 2024. Current ELD centers are not equal in all of the following ways. Student-to-teacher ratios. Amount of daily instructional time. Tier-three intervention support. Sheltered content classes for newcomers. Differentiated support for students with interrupted formal education. Enrollment procedures and evaluation of international transcripts. Mainstream teachers with adequate professional development. Staffing of multilingual professionals, para-professionals. You have said once again that your vision for instruction is, quote, "student-centered, putting the needs, interests, and identities of our students first in everything we do." Prove it. Let us be a part of the planning and show you how to achieve that for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Nina Louise Dagavarian.
We don't need more teachers over our teachers in school. Closing schools is going to break our hearts and break up our minds. I already feel sad knowing my school is going to close. My teachers work hard. They need their jobs. And we never get to, never ever get to see my friends and my teachers again. We don't want STEM. We want STEAM. In STEAM, we work as a group, solve problems, and to build. You can learn from schools like Ross Fair. Building and working together is better than tearing down. In STEAM, we listen to each other. Why don't you listen to us? Keep our schools open. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Valerie Webb Olman.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Should I just start?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to.
Sorry, I think we lost the boardroom. So Stephanie, are you texting the folks in the room? Or Dave?
But we're good.
We can, we can hear you all.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Yeah, everybody on Zoom, just hang on, because I think we lost. I see the.
Director Yord, can you hear us in the boardroom? No? I mean, we can hear you, so.
They can still hear you in the committee room, so if you want to go ahead and speak, they can still hear us. We just can't hear or see them.
Oh, I, I see them now.
Okay, everything is fixed. We had a computer problem. Okay, please start from the beginning of your testimony.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for this chance to speak. I'm the parent of a first grader at Colfax, and I am also concerned that the updated facilities utilization plan, which, if you remember, was crafted expressly to demonstrate the plan's feasibility, does not even come close to doing that. While I understand that it would be impossible to estimate the cost of every single element of the plan, for example, every single piece of technology that will be purchased, the reinvestment scenarios stated in the document on the website are unacceptably vague. Only the cost of the teacher centers and, to some extent, the specialized teachers are called out explicitly. For example, I question how the stated cost avoidances could possibly be enough to cover the mobile engagement unit to gather community feedback, plus the staff and training needed to do so, all the new furnishing to support student-centered learning, and the in-school gifted education, training, and staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The updated plan includes more detail than the previous plan did, but only on the saving side of the ledger. The improvements promised by the plan offers are vast and frankly hand-wavy. Before the board can reasonably be expected to vote on moving forward with such drastic changes, the plan must also include greater detail, much greater detail, on the cost side of the ledger. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarah Zangle.
Hi, good evening. I'm worried, and I'm going to use my three minutes to try and cover why. We know we're in crisis. We have an equity crisis. We have an impending financial crisis. We have old infrastructure. We have all of these longstanding issues and more. But we cannot rely on old solutions to remedy these problems. We know that any change is going to result in student attrition, and we've seen it. The district has experienced, unfortunately, time and time again, attrition every time we do something like this. We adjust the footprint, we close schools, we lose kids. We are facing a pervasive attitude out there right now that considers thing, considers this and says, if you want to go, go. We'll do right by the students that remain in the system. No harm done. In the past, that's been okay. That attitude's been okay. This round of closures is different, and I think that attitude of if you go, if you want to go, is a short-sighted one. I don't think that we will be able to adequately and responsibly educate students who remain because it's different this time. Why? Charters. Charters are everywhere now, and they're poised to continue their growth. Those charter options are available to all regardless of zip code or income. This matters for many, many, many reasons, but I'm going to point out two right now. We're going to be paying more to educate and transport those charter school students, students to school, and the majority of the charter schools in Pittsburgh, in the Pittsburgh area are performing at or below PPS averages, some of them severely below. So as a district, we are going to pay more for these students to get a crappier education. I truly feel that this round of closures with an exodus of students to charters will put us beyond that zone of critical mass that we need to have to keep our PPS students financially supported. Every time we close schools, PPS retains a higher number proportionally of students with IEPs and unique educational needs. With the loss of our current PPS population to charters, we have fewer resources to offer PPS students who do stay, who do remain, and maybe need more resources and need those resources to be exceptional and equitably distributed. Charters take a disproportionate amount of education and transportation dollars, and at some point, we won't be able to fund charters and educate our PPS students. And I think the tipping point is fast approaching. We need an educational system that is equitable, versatile, flexible, and we need a system that is dynamic and maintains resource control at the district level. And we need, need to start treating our students and our families as resources, not as an expendable afterthought. That we have a chance to create a real change in the district for those who need it most. We have a chance to move forward together and build the public education that we desire in our city. It starts with us. It starts with you. The 2025-26 kindergarten class will graduate high school in 2037. The decisions that you all are making in the next few months will resonate over years and decades. Please take it seriously. Long after you've resigned these positions in the board or retired from the administration, students will be living out the execution of this plan, and families will be fielding the consequences. Let's make sure these steps that we're taking now are leading to a strong, vibrant, equitable public school system here in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Sheila Maystein.
Mrs. Maystein, if you could please open your mic and start your testimony.
Great, thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay, thank you. Nothing can substitute for the magic of the story circle in school libraries. Sitting on the carpet with our friends, crisscross applesauce with our hands in our laps, eyes wide, with our listening ears on, hearing Amazing Grace teach her class that she can indeed play the part of Peter Pan, as no David does every mischievous thing but is loved and valued anyway, watching as the caterpillar eats all the candy and cupcakes and gets a stomach ache, but then a fresh green leaf helps him turn into a beautiful butterfly. These stories and all the others teach our children at a vulnerable age that mistakes are okay to make because we can learn from them, that even when we mess up, we still deserve love, and that being different is wonderful. The school library is different than classroom and public libraries. Our collections support what teachers are doing, so if teachers do special projects, they will be able to find materials to support them. Each school library's collection has books that support where children are developmentally. So there may be four or five biographies of Dr. King on different reading levels, for example. So success is guaranteed for readers. We have magazines, films, reference materials, and online encyclopedias and databases we teach teachers and students to use for research. Most importantly, we have deep, rich collections of fiction and nonfiction for students to browse for books to read for fun. Being able to choose your own books from a large collection while in school is incredibly important. Not every family can get to a public library for book selection. School libraries are irreplaceable. Philadelphia and Boston are both working on returning school librarians to every school in their districts. The Lance and Schwartz Study, How School Libraries Pay Off, says, "On average, Black and Latino students who had access to school, to larger school library collections, saw their percentages of advanced writing scores more than double, and their likelihood of scoring below basic levels cut in half compared with their peers in schools with smaller collections." After seeing the sample schedule for the first time this morning included in the facilities utilization plan with no mention of elementary or middle school library, but only something called a period of "when", I question if PPS is going to create a different role for PPS librarians than the one we currently have. If so, I'm calling on the Board of Directors and Dr. Walters to reconsider. If we are students first always and all ways, then consider how deeply influential that story circle in the school library is on little ones. Stories will build their characters, develop their hearts and minds, but that starts in a circle, in a library, with a certified school librarian doing what he or she does best, reading and checking out the best books for children. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. This concludes the testimony portion of public hearing, and I will now turn this meeting over to Board President Jane Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And as always, thank you to everyone who took time out today to either come or testify virtually. We appreciate your input and look forward to seeing you all tomorrow at our legislative meeting. Everyone have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.